Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Councilor Reynolds for having taken a lot of time, both together and with other folks who have worked here hard, staff, Chris, John Simon, Jessica, Gonzalez, Chris, Julian, Moya, I could go on, everybody has put in a lot of work, Task Force has been just in particular, they have worked really hard, they, some of the members that are here tonight, and I thank them now. There was a time for me now, I think people thought, we had taken on a task that we couldn't complete, and at times it seemed very difficult, amazingly and wonderfully, we all came together, and I think we've done a great job, albeit we made some additions and amendments to it tonight, but I just want to say that I think it's worked well, just to hear what has also been part of this, and I want to thank everyone who's participated, I'm sure Councilor Reynolds will see it, so, but, in that speaking time, the closest, held that right, for sure, Councilor.
And before the good Councilor Reynolds, we also have additional copies of the floor substitute, plus the amendments that we signed, if you'd like to get a copy of it, the staff will provide that for you, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilor Gardino and I think that, from the two years of the city council, I'm very, very proud of the process that we have worked on this civilian oversight until, you know, Councilor Gardino and I started working on this together, some people kind of looked at us like, kidding me? But the task force, we got this task force together, we both wanted to make sure that it covered every aspect of our community, it had input from every aspect of the folks, including retired police officers, and I think, you know, is this really going to work? It is amazing how that task force worked together, and how they really came up with the majority of what this ordinance is, and a lot of it was humanities, and so I really, really want to thank the task force for what they did for this, and I think that this is a great example throughout the country that people can use, as far as working on any kind of ordinance and how we did it, and I'm just very, very, very proud of it, and so I'm going to go ahead and move the bill. This is floor substitute 2013, amending the police oversight ordinance to abolish the police oversight commission and establish the civilian police oversight agency with newer amended duties, qualifications, and responsibilities, and adopting related amendments dealing with the civilian police oversight agency and the internal review office, I move to do pass.
I guess we have a motion, and he said, by Councilor Gardino, and then Councilor Reynolds?
We move the floor substitute, I move floor substitute three for O-13.
We have a motion, and second by Councilor Gardino, all those that hear of floor substitute three, O-13, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes, yes.
Opposed?
And, Councilor, we're going to have a lot of amendments that we're going to discuss, I don't know, we need to put a public comment first and do that.
Yeah, let's go and go to a public comment first, and we will be discussing the amendments. The first speaker, and I will call the first four speakers, and once your name has been called, come to the front, we have seen up in the front, and be prepared to speak. The first speaker will be Fred Maurer, followed by Stephanie Lopez, followed by Michelle Canroy, followed by Art Tenenbaum. Let's go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, my name is Frederick Maurer, my name is Frederick Maurer, I am legal counsel for the Albuquerque Police Officers Association, Act 4015.
Can't hear you. Can't hear you.
Sorry. Okay, is that better?
That sounds, can you hear the audience?
It's about actually, for ten years, it's been my honor to represent the nine police officers of the city of Albuquerque. I come here tonight in recognition, the first thing I want to say is I recognize, as well as the association recognizes, the hard work that we put into this policy, we don't deflect that, we don't dishonor that, we understand that sometimes changes have to happen, and in fact, the association would tell you that, we understand sometimes that there has to be things done that improve the overall quality of everyone's lives. But I think the message I want to deliver tonight in recognition, very limited amount of time I have, is I have to pass on to you, from the association, and it's almost 900 members, the dismay that we are faced with tonight with the adoption of this proposal, because what it does, is in essence, take a contract that we just finished, and effectively adopted and put into effect on July 15th of this year, and the five years of fighting over contract rights, and it completely wipes out a whole chunk of that contract in section 20, having to do with internal investigations, and the disclosure of information in those investigations, and the rights given to officers in those investigations. And that's the dismay part to us, is that we took five years to get this done, we stuck with the city, we stuck at the table, we negotiated the contract in good faith, and then not more than 60 days later, this bill, as it's proposed, is going to, in effect, place us back into a situation that we have no other alternative, but to begin litigation necessary to protect our contract, and the contract rights there under, and the officers' rights there under, with regard to confidentiality. Thank you.
Mr. Maurer, I have one question for you.
Thank you, sir.
If the consent decree is filed with the courts, once the Department of Justice completes the consent decree, it is signed and filed with the federal courts, won't that supersede any contract negotiation, or any contract that was negotiated between the city and the police union?
It would depend, obviously, sir, Mr. President, members of the commission, it would depend on what's in that consent decree, as to this particular issue, if, as an example, as I understand the process, that if the consent decree that would be filed with the federal court, the union is allowed an opportunity to intervene in that proceeding, to make similar arguments, that in fact, what this process does, has violated contractual obligations that the city honored on July 15, 2014, so we would have to intervene if that's what happens.
Counselors.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Maurer, one thing, and I was talking to staff, that occurs to us that, I mean, by the time we get this ordinance in place, then we have to have, the city council's going to, with the, with the medices coming, the city council's actually going to be vetting the members of the new POC, the, there's going to be another hiring process for another IRO, is it going to be called the IRO?
Executive Director.
Executive Director.
The executive director, so it may be hiring an executive director, by the time we get all that in place, probably three, four months down the road, anyway, and then the contract that we have ends in July, so it might just be that this particular issue just kind of, that this part of the ordinance just isn't enforced until July when the contract ends.
And that may be, we recognize that, that's why I extended the offer I did, that the association understands that things move forward in life, we're not, we're not here to say they don't, and we would be more than willing to avoid litigating more issues with the city over contract rights of police officers in this city, to discuss things as they, as they go forward, and I understand that this may take a great deal of time before it actually comes into effect, and we would be willing during that time period, obviously, to sit down and see what we can do to try and rectify what we perceive to see as violations.
So, let's assume that the, that this part of the ordinance, that the city attorney or, or counsel, or somebody, just recognized that, well, we're not going to, we're going to not enforce this part of the contract, and, until July 15th when the contract ends, I mean, would that solve their concern, or are you really talking about something in the future?
It may, I don't know what to expect, I'm just, I'm here to speak against what has happened, and not for the wrong reason, and I think Ms. Lopez will tell you, I'm here to convey the dismay that we just finished the contract, and this wasn't even brought to the table, we finished it in good faith, signed it, we thought we were done, and now this brings to bear again, another contract breach that the APOA has to address.
Okay, and I will let you know, I was very concerned about these issues, the GARY issues, and some of these other things that concern me greatly, but we heard from the Department of Justice, and Mr. Green is going to talk about some of this also, that they were kind of wanting, have these kind of provisions in there, so, I mean, do you, as the ordinance is written, do you think that it's legal, in terms of the officers' rights?
No, what, I think one's breach contract, which is a state.
Let's forget about the contract, but in terms of the GARY, the constitutional rights, would GARY, if you were to, that's over those.
Right, here's my problem with that specific issue, having to do with GARY, GARY in effect, so you understand, is a position that's taken with respect to public employees because, and administrations such as the police department has to get to the bottom of issues, so what they do is they violate the Fifth Amendment rights, that's really one of the last rights that we have, that the courts defend almost to the hilt, is your Fifth Amendment right not to be compelled to give incriminating statements against oneself. When you bring an officer in, as an example, into an administrative proceeding, and you give him his GARY rights, and in fact, the GARY section is recognized in this process, and one of the last sections of the contract, it talks about the compelling of officers to participate in these proceedings, it's mandatory for cooperation, it's one of the last provisions of this agreement, you're embodying the compulsion of testimony, case law is clear, that testimony cannot be used to prosecute an officer for any kind of criminal behavior, the problem this act, this particular act creates is that, under the old act, access to this information by contract, and how the process worked, was very limited, narrowed, and summarized, the GARY statements never left into public affairs, under this act, even though I understand there's a confidentiality provision, and there is a restriction, and now I see under the floor amendment, a possible exposure to revolting, criminal charges, the problem is, commission members, that once this information, if it's leaked, shared amongst nine people, plus administrative staff, and executive director and legal counsel, is leaked, the risk that taken is, an officer's career is ruined, a good DA doesn't need the compelled statement to prevent criminal charges if he gets his, gets his hands on this information, and you've destroyed the protection offered by the compelled statement, that's the concern, the old system at least had checks and balances, and the information was limited as to who could get it, this opens it up to everyone, that's our concern as to international constitutional rights protected, they're up to.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer, for your business.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Stephanie Lopez.
Hello, Ms. Sanchez and Councilor Reynolds, I come before the council today to ask that more time be reserved and thought be put into the reform of the citizen oversight policing. We use the association's support to change the reform, but we would ask that people who administer the discipline, officers who could potentially be affected by discipline, the association, the department, the city council, and the community, all have crucial parts played in the reform of the department's oversight. Lately, on several occasions, we have seen knee-jerk reactions and changes, we want to ensure that the changes made, in this instance, will not only benefit the community, but will also be a fair process to the officers it will affect, and the administration will impose it. Right now, the POC and the independent review office, we have a structure in place, it's damaged in places, but it can be restored, there is no need to completely tear down a structure and rebuild it from the ground up, it would be a waste of tax dollars, time, and effort, it makes no sense to implement a proposal that has not been tested, and has had several reasons listed as to why it will fail before it even starts, again, we ask, let the association, the department, the community, and the council assist in making the changes to establish a reform that's going to benefit everyone in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez, Michelle Canroy, followed by Art Tenenbaum, followed by Nora Alaya, welcome.
Hello, I'm a licensed psychotherapist in the community, and also the white policeman officer, in my profession, I work both with community members struggling with mental illness, and also with law enforcement officers from various departments across the country. The proposal being suggested here would hurt everyone, my clients, my neighbors, fellow community members, and my family, my understanding is that this amendment is supposed to foster mutual, I'm sorry, foster trust and cooperation between police and citizens, I feel that the proposed amendments, excuse me, amendment will in fact do just the opposite, creating greater mistrust and a division between our police and citizens. The division between citizens and the police department has been largely fueled by media half-truths and public misunderstanding of issues that law enforcement face, citizens are not aware of the policies, and don't know the reasons behind officer decisions, it is easy to sit in their living room couch, or even in some appointed panel, and judge the choices of others, with little training or personal experience in what that officer faces, in the moment that makes to make a life or death situation. We've appointed these officers to protect us, and to risk their lives every day to do so, and yet many citizens don't give them the trust and respect to do their job. The solution to building trust between citizens and police is improved communication and education of the community, of the lives and choices of our brave law enforcement. Before creating knee-jerk plans for further oversight, please look at the nature of the division between the community and the police, please include planning on greater education of the citizens who will be overseeing these officers, and also please reconsider such things as airing disciplinary hearings, giving greater power to judge without education will further divide our community and further risk the lives of our officers.
Thank you, Art Tenenbaum, Nora Alaya, Dr. Bill Cass, and Tony Perard. One person.
Council President Sanchez, members of the city council, thank you for your time in public service, I do admire and respect the people who put a lot of heart into serving the public interest, and includes a good man in the house there, people who's to help. I attended some of the police service staff's first meetings, I have some firsthand experience with public safety professionals, also some firsthand experience in the mayor's office, which is trouble, these are matters of policy, of course, and that Greenwood fellow said a couple of times that mutual respect is vital, I agree with him, and underlying the mutual respect is trust, mutual trust. These are matters of policy, this is serious business, and the members of the city council, and the people who are in the mayor's administration, are charged to be serving the public interest, and they should not, by anyone, drive the public trust, or distrust of members of the police department. I take issue with the First Amendment and this big packet of amendments, I take exception, and I'm opposed to the notion of renaming the civilian police oversight board, simply because there's a conflict of acting names. I think independent oversight is very, very important, I support good people in the community, good people in government, opposed to people who push boundaries too far, no policy is going to be flawed, the real problem is people who egregiously and extremely take advantage of the flaws in any policy, so I encourage members of the public to be somewhat patient, and support the policy process, and I also encourage elected officials to do your duty.
Thank you, Nora Alaya, Dr. Bill Cass, Tony Perard, and Scott Hickerson. Welcome.
Thank you, President Sanchez, council, we have been here, coming for the last four years at least, to ask, and we, we really are coming here to beg for you to table this O-14-13, as it stands, it was a facade, as it stood, and now it's going to be coming back as the same thing, we really, and, I myself feel that it's so imperative that it be tabled for the simple fact that it needs more, it needs to be critiqued much more. One of the things that I believe strongly in, is that with community oversight, we've been asking for that since the beginning, that is so crucial, if you ignore that, you ignore the people that have been coming here, and honestly, that's what we have been feeling ignoring. I wished that there would also be public comment, whenever you do any kind of a meeting like this, because everyone has their input that is actually good input, so that being said, I am so at a point now, that if you ignore the community oversight, you're ignoring the people, and we, the people, are here standing before you, asking, please, whatever you do, and this, if it's a POC, to call that again, police oversight commission, it needs to be approved, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bill Cass. Welcome.
Chairman Sanchez, ladies and council, I'd like to express my support for this, for this proposed ordinance, and I'd like to extend the strength of it, through, in a particular way, and that is, I'd like to see oversight of the, of the APD be extended where there's policy input by the public at the beginning of the process, for example, if we had public policy input, I don't believe we would have had the move toward militarization of the police, that we've seen recently, in Albuquerque and throughout the country, I think the public doesn't want to see tanks on this region, and I think if the public has input into the beginning of the process, that that's the kind of thing that would be intended, so, I'm supporting the ordinance, but I'm also saying, let's extend it to where we create public policy, with, with public input. I'd just like to remind the APD, that it's we, the public, through our government, you the council, who establishes the mission of APD, APD doesn't independently decide that their mission is to protect and serve Albuquerque, the community of Albuquerque, through their tax dollars, and hire APD to protect and serve Albuquerque, and as, as a consequence of that, consequence of that, they have the right to set the policy, and do the oversight of APD after, after things go wrong, so, I would like to see increased oversight, at both the beginning and the end of the process.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Cass, Tony Perard, Scott Hickerson, Andrew Luthman, welcome.
Thank you. For 17 years, and then some, Albuquerque has had oversight that does absolutely nothing, except give in to cover-ups and APD wish lists, DOJ needs to come out of the closet and cooperate with their oath of office also, if they can't protect the people, then turn your guns and badges in at the door, it's time to end the crooked corrupt corporate-owned system of slavery as US, as, we could, as US citizens live under, the time for change is now, goodbye Robin Hammer and company, go use your phony credentials down in Panama somewhere, it's time to take the salary of Robin Hammer and divide it up amongst the new seven citizen member board, and two members of the staff, city council shall throw about $50 extra in, or $50,000 extra in, just to round out the paychecks of the citizens on the board, the chief is not the chief yet, as the people have not put him in place, Stryker in Greenwood can go waste, cannot go waste taxpayer money anymore, also, they should turn in their free pass to the DOJ, you don't, you didn't do squat in LA, and you're still, and you're stalling here as well, tour it, goodbye, bye-bye mob boss, the constant covering up by APD will come to a end, there will be an immediate, there will be an immediate investigation into internal affairs, we will also have complete transparency in all departments, killer cops will go to jail as promised, yes, folks, you'll probably be another 50 or 60 cops, sure, as they are going to jail, I have several models of citizen oversight, with a type five model to be put in place as well, there has always been a problem with oversight obtaining subpoena power.
Thank you, your time is up. Scott Hickerson, Andrew Luthman, Dinah Rargus, welcome.
Welcome, council members, the system as it stands now is pretty closed, POC, IA, IRO, there's no check and balances, there's no outside access to any information on any incident, officers get to choose whether they turn their camera on or off, Chief Gordon Eaton decides that, I'm not going to punish them, it's against rules, but I don't think they should, there is no check and balances, it's an advisory system, we have a DA that has never prosecuted an officer ever for anything, and we've had 27 deaths, and the DOJ has decided that a lot of those were unjustified, and there's no action that we can take. I haven't read your bill, but if it's still advisory, it's a joke, there's no teeth behind it, if there's nothing that somebody can independently do to subpoena information, to have first access to all lapel camera information that they can view, and it's not cut, and/or deleted, or cut and pasted, or, you know, just disappeared, if officers can be disciplined independently of the chief, then great, if not, it's a joke, it is a mock trial, and I talked about this last time, you've got to learn from history, or you're going to repeat it, our founding fathers, King George, protect the soldiers from murder, be a mock trial, it says those words in Independence, the Declaration of Independence, and it led to a revolution, people aren't going to tolerate militarized police force, and live or die attitude that cops have today, you don't do what I say, then I'm going to beat you up and arrest you and kill you, it's, it's not going to work, it's up to you, there's a lot of lives in people's hands.
Thank you, Andrew Luthman, Dinah Rargus, Nancy Colinsburg, Ellen Weidman.
President Sanchez, councilors, good evening, thank you for all your hard work on this, I know this is a very complex issue, I've spent probably most of my time, the last three years, working on this issue, and spent six months sharing the police oversight task force, I know it is a very complicated, complex issue, to be honest, I came tonight prepared to support the third iteration of this bill, I thought it was a fairly good bill, there's still some challenges in it, but I don't think any bill will ever be perfect, I think it's an evolutionary science, that of citizen oversight, and I think that it will continue to evolve, however, I got here this evening, and I found a document that had, I think there's 22 different amendments to this bill, so, speaking this time, I can't tell you whether I'm going to support the bill or not, some of those amendments are good, some of them are terrible, so, maybe what you need to do is give it more time, I, I don't know, I was quite surprised to arrive here this, this evening, and see 22 changes to what has been proposed, so, I'm going to wait and see which I'll hash out, what, what happens, but I think the original bill incorporated most, if not all, of the recommendations of the police oversight task force, and I will tell you that I've gone back and researched all of the MGT reports, and all of the other studies that have been done, and those recommendations cover everything that we heard in the public, as well as the reports that have been done over the last 10 years, thank you.
And certainly, I want to personally say thank you to you for your work as chairman of the task force, I know it took a great deal of time, you guys have done, I think, an exceptional job of the work, and you went out and reached out to the community, and you truly listened to the public, and a lot of these ideas were incorporated into the , actually, the third, fourth substitute, appreciate all your work for the task force, welcome.
Thank you. Dinah Rargus, Nancy Colinsburg, Ellen Weidman, Jonathan Sable.
Hi, there, there may have been some doubt, four years ago, there was absolutely no doubt today that Albuquerque Police Department violates Fourth Amendment rights, that debate is now over, and those Fourth Amendment rights equal crimes, crimes that have gone unnoticed and unaccounted for for years, there is equally no doubt that those who yield the badge have a difficult job, nobody is debating that, one does have to be, one does not have to be a cop or a cat train to weigh in on the matter, it's not, it's sort of like questioning a heart surgeon before you go on for heart surgery, because you've never performed heart surgery, as, as a public, we have every right to be concerned and to have complete transparency in whatever is going on in any of our departments, the fact remains that all systems are bound, they are truly broken, though they can be repaired, trust between community and police, they are damaged, and we can't even begin to start resolution until, until we start to fix these problems, but we don't have to wait for an agenda item, or somebody like the likes of Tom Stryker for 200 to 200. for two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars to start today. We can do that today for free. And just because I like to say what I like to say, Tom Stryker and Scott Greenwood, they're a repeat waste of taxpayer dollars. Most crooks I know come in and piece a joint before they, they rip somebody off. I don't know why we gave them two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, on top of almost two million dollars for Tager, for Tager International. The APOA attorney said that when he checks the balances, I would agree, because the citizens have, not had them for years. Split-second decisions, they are difficult indeed. And I, and, and I would say they were extremely difficult for Officer Dear when he shot Mario Hox at a sixty-degree downward angle, or James Boyd from feet away in the back.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Nancy Colberg, Alan Wagner, Jonathan Sable, and Peter Sidenson. Please welcome your partners.
Good evening, distinguished members of the council, Nancy Gaines, Professor of the Police Oversight Task Force. I came in prepared with two observations, and then looked at a packet of amendments, and now have several. My original two were that there were two things that we had recommended when we were meeting this summer that we're not available, that were very important. First of all, the public comment was real clear, that individual complaints is wanted enough to be heard at the, at the hearings about their complaints, and I don't see this in the floor substitute. That was extremely important, the public comment, and it's not here. The other thing that's really important is the policy work, and the way the police oversight task force had suggested due to it was to have a two-tiered system for individual complaints in the hearing process. And that was stripped out of the recommendation, that, that recommendation was not intended to, and it's not in here. So it puts the, puts the board in a very difficult situation, because you've acknowledged that the majority of the work should be policy, which we agree, and I had a personal conversation with Dr. Samuel Walker, who stressed that. Yet the way it's structured in here, there'll be, as it's always been, the focus is going to be on the individual complaints. And if you have your focus on individual complaints, the amount of time you have to actually look at policy is substantially different. So I'm really concerned that this will harm the purpose of the oversight work. I'm also concerned that the, or the amendment says that the independent council for the board will be funded through the city attorney? I'm sorry, the independence goes away if the city attorney is going to be responsible for the contract, or the independent council, which, it's, it's gotta go. I hope you're not gonna do that. Also, the number from ninety-seven, I appreciate the members of ninety-seven, so it doesn't seem like the council is individually serving, yet the work is pretty considerable.
Councilor.
This is Governor Green, obviously, too, and then this is, is there anything else you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. President, and also, from the, I did see, so the ninety-seven, I commented on, I'll pack these real quickly. Let me see, there's one more. Yeah, there is. Thank you. The audit function. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about that. We struggled with the notion of an audit function essentially being the decision of the board to determine how frequently it wanted to audit. The number, a letter D, strips the discretion from the board to that they may perform an annual audit on a random sample, up to ten percent of the individual civilian police complaint investigations. Another, this is another way of stripping the, the board of its ability to do policy work, because that's the purpose of the audit function, so they can only do one annual audit, and have a limit as to the number of complaints they can rule. I think that essentially, it almost destroys the, the ability to do the audits and to do the, the policy work that's actually necessary. Thank you, council, for the opportunity to comment on that one, and I really hope that does not get accepted, otherwise, it's all for naught. Thank you.
Again, thank you for your work on the task force, appreciate it. Alan Wagner, Jonathan Sable, and Peter Sidenson.
Thank you, Mayor. We didn't speak at the, so.
That's fine. Jonathan Sable.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors, thank you for your hard work on this as well. I'm concerned that the proposed legislation before you tonight is piled up amendments and really represents legislation on the fly without having built first at council chambers of consensus. And what I believe you need to do tonight is start with some soul searching on principles and priorities amongst yourselves, and then have some deep conversations about what it is that an ordinance should contain, when you can come to some agreement amongst yourselves about that. You may at that point be able to look at developing goals, and from those goals, an ordinance. And I think you've put the cart before the horse by cobbling together this ordinance and the many amendments that are for us. From my point of view, the police force needs good, strong, deep, and thorough accountability, and the citizen requires the same, and that in no way diminishes or harms the police force. In fact, in many conversations I've had with many fine officers, it expresses just how they're entirely ready to be examined, and that their work is fine and outstanding, and demonstrates just how open they can be. From my point of view, I have minor other disagreements. I disagree, for example, with the police oversight board recommending sanctions on officers, I think that should do the police chief's job, not just the board. I have many other comments, I sent them to you for your review. Can I ask you a question?
Thank you. Next paper, Peter Sidenson, and... Followed by Antonio Aragon de Vidalas, followed by Andres Valdez, followed by Barbara Groves. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for your science and for the study in Mexico. Also, former task force member for the police oversight task force. I, I wanna share some of the comments, or reiterate some of the comments, I guess, in this chamber, which is some confusion about the number of amendments that are being made, what ordinance, in fact, we're looking at here today. I have not had the opportunity to review all of the amendments, and so I'm not prepared to talk to each and every one of those changes. What I would say is, a particular concern that I think was reflected in the, in the candidates within the task force, Matt, is that in every review of our civilian oversight body during the state of over, from Walker, through the two MGT reports, one key flaw has been highlighted, and that has been the, the POC, the civilian oversight body's focus on civilian complaints, and policy matters, and systemic issues. Over and over again, that, this highlight of the task force, these are the ones for civilian oversight task force. Indeed, that is the kind of fight I've come, wanted to join this task force, wanted to help, wanted to be part of the task force, because in the midst of one of the most lumpy streets, streets of oxygen-free shootings that we've ever had in this city, our POC reluctantly was silent as that, and devoted more of its attention to citizen complaints. In the last line of genes that the POC task force had, we devoted most of our deliberation to this very question, and how could we devise a way that the POC members would continue to get their hands dirty with complaints, but not be so distracted by complaints that they wouldn't still address these key systemic issues and policy matters? We devise a sort of, you know, a hearing process that we thought would address that, fortunately, that's been taken out. And I would, and I think, in fact, what has resulted, is in fact, this is a scenario that will exacerbate the issue, I would refer to the, with some process within this ordinance, that would ensure that the POC promotes its efforts to policy and systemic questions, and not just to citizen complaints. I think we've got the opportunity here to do something unique with this civilian oversight body. Frankly, we'll do, if we go on the path of continuing to have the POC perform the function that they always have, which is primarily the duty of citizen complaints.
Thank you. Antonio Aragon de Vidalas, Andres Valdez, and Barbara Groves. Welcome.
Mr. President, distinguished members of my city council, just recently, I was visited by crisis intervention team, the city of Albuquerque Police Department. The total amount of times I've been visited by the crisis intervention team as a disabled American veteran, with PTSD and physical injuries, serving in the country for twenty-six years in the uniform, military, in my family, and seventeen times, possibly over nineteen, take note, there are sixteen thousand soldiers coming back to the state of Mexico from Iraq and Afghanistan. There's another sixteen thousand soldiers coming back to the state of Arizona with racial discrimination, as we've talked about in Washington, DC, and this present time, and take note, and I, distinguished members, we are at a national level of stigmatic lifestyle that we've had to lead, not only with our politicians being part of it, but our society being hugely part, a very positive death amongst disabled American veterans. I ask for the, the time that's crisis intervention has been visiting me, making sure I'm all right, has gotten better. Throughout the years, that they have visited me, they usually took me to the VA hospital in somewhat of a hostile form. This figure is getting better, and must stop. There's sixteen thousand soldiers coming back to each of our states, and Washington talking to us on a national level, and a very embarrassing factor, and being the first force to be commissioned, we need to get better with our politics, and attending to our dignity, honor, and respect for our disabled American veterans. We must become good vecinos and good vecinas, good friends and good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. President, members of the council. The next one is...
Guardunio, I winter claim that the new police oversight agency will be independent, deceptively. It is not. Page nine, lines three and four, show commissioners will be appointed by a most incorruptive city council. I filed complaints against four city councillors today, with the inspector general's office against you for violations of Article twelve, according to Article eight, human and civil rights, or human rights, that is, condoning human and civil rights violations by purposely appointing commissioners who supported the human and civil rights violations. Linda Martinez, Beni Fokes. In other words, how can we trust you to appoint impartial commissioners? We can. A corrupt city council will make a corrupt decision. Or should I say partially corrupt, or some corrupt city councilors? Your complaints question whether these councillors should be entitled to appoint future commissioners, since these councillors purposely have destroyed civilian oversight with their condolment and their support of bad commissioners. The complaints are against Ray Guardunio, Trudy Jones, Don Harris, along with Richard Perry, and Brad Winter. Brad, Ray Guardunio, for shenanigans in his task force selection of the POC, and his deceptively not independent POC ordinance. Trudy Jones for being blatantly anti-human and civil rights. Winter for being a sinister supporter of human and civil rights violations, with his appointment in the Beni Fokes. I have the copy to give the council. May I, who will be there?
Uh, we will, staff, and they will hand that out, and the chances, but, hold it back. I'll hand that out to the council. Barbara Groves, Kat Minsky, John Epper. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, and council members. As a person who has been actively, not for years, that's, you know, decisions are pretty short, I can just say that one of the things that's increasingly disturbing to me is the number of police meetings and abuse and violence that we see daily coming from all corners of our country. You know, Albuquerque has its share, and we kind of lead the country in all the things that we've done as activists in the community to try to keep the fire going to pass and reform here. You know, everything that's gone on in Ferguson has gone on here in Albuquerque before, and, you know, it's, it's frustrating, but it's hugely concerning that this ordinance doesn't really address the abuse of police power, the militarization of the police. Maybe even just, this idea that if a police officer tells you to do something, you do it, or you die, is really kind of uncomfortable, I think, in our democracy. It seems like we have to have some kind of trust and some kind of willingness for the citizens to find it compelling to obey police officers at the threat of death. This is the, this is the only way they're gonna get compliance now, if you don't, if you don't, if you don't tell me your name now, I might shoot you in a minute. I mean, those are really concerning things, and I don't know what is fully addressed in the ordinance, it's hard to tell, you know, as other people have said, and I would talk with respect to people who have served on the police oversight commission and given input, who've not seen their input validated with this ordinance. So I urge you to take the time that's needed to look this over and make a best ordinance possible that has some teeth, that the citizens know that our police are responsive to our needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Kat Minsky, John Epper, Fabricio Fratellari. Close, proceed.
Yeah. Did I show them?
Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Kat Minsky, I have a birthday, but anyway, let me get to the point. Well, are we gonna have an oversight commission, APD oversight commission appointed by city council, that's what I heard, absolutely not. A oversight commission should be completely free of politics, and not, not affiliated with any politician, neither any bureaucrat. Committees, well, city council, multiple committees, members, et cetera, that's what I'm coming from. Well, now go to, what can we expect to see from oversight? Being completely independent, selected by a committee, special committee like jury? Or are they should be mostly victims of police brutality? Those aren't, they really understand that issue, can understand. Now, clarify, next, excuse me, let me go back right here. Last bit, last bit, the police should be only, used only minimum degree of the support in order to achieve objectives. Police are, police are, are the public, and the public are the police. Thank you.
Thank you. John Epper, Fabricio Fratellari, and Alan Wagner.
I wasn't expecting to be here today, but they're really important, I thought, but I am already, I am, I am here, um... If you would, would you please speak to the microphone, please, in here? Thank you. Councilors, I'm here to talk about the POC, and what is happening in the sound right here. I'll start off with what I wrote down here. In nineteen eighty-four, it tells us that you have to make yourself stupid in order to live in that type of society. That is the kind of Orwellian thing that, where you talk about... That is the kind of Orwellian thing that, where you talk about having two contradictory ideas in your mind and believing both of them at the same time. And some of the Orwellian things that are happening are, like, we have to worry about the police being able to turn on or not turn on the microphone. There are cameras or being able to tell what happened in the shooting or something about permitting themselves. But at the same time, we have things like Ferguson going on, where we had Jim Crow, and legalized lynching for people who were just shot, and the government is set up to shed down the black and poor residents, and that's why I have this thing over here that talks about what happens when a couple of individuals are either benevolent or tyrannical, simply self-interested. This is a question that economists and social scientists increasingly raise, that politicians are rational and self-interested, they may be inclined to make decisions which they would personally, for which they would personally benefit regardless of whether it would be the best choice for the society as a whole, such self-interested political persons. Thank you, Senator.
Fabrizio Fratellari, and the last speaker will be Alan Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. President and Councilors. I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for your opportunity to serve on the task force. I have been, you know, we tend to always focus on the differences and not follow the commonalities and stuff, so I think that overall, this bill is actually provide much better than the current ordinance. It provides a great board that is, as an agency, that is independent as it can be under city government, and it provides adequate funding for it. So there are a lot of things that we on the task force have agreed upon. I've been on minority on some issues, but this particular final iteration has, in my opinion, won a major flaw, and that is that, that has been talked about already from Mr. Simonson and Ms. Cundersberg, which is there's too much focus on individual complaint as a responsibility of the Board, and that will have an automatic tendency for not focusing as much on the policy and systemic issues as been talked about. I also have an issue with the language on gary. I'm on the record of that, without dealing with the legalities of it. I just think it's bad public policy to have better protected information be provided to an advisory board of appointed citizens. And it does produce, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Sanders.
And I think it does produce undesirable effects immediately, in addition to which, as I understand it, the consent decree that is being negotiated at this time will have some direction for the city on that very issue. So I wonder why, at least on that issue, you know, what's the purpose of raising it at this stage? Why not wait for that, you know? It's like, if you have to get to the other side of the river, it's not a good idea to set the bridge on fire before you cross. Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
I think there's a question for you.
Mr. Fratellari. First, next, we're serving on the task force, we really do appreciate it. And so just to clarify your last point, would, vis a vis the gary issue, right, is what we were talking about.
Right.
With the DOJ consent decree likely to address that as well.
That's my understanding. I have nothing obvious to add.
And I think you're correct in saying that. So your elimination would be, without that language, we could amend that, I mean, the likelihood is, is that after the consent decree, we're going to be implementing this, if we were to put this in place prior to the consent decree, the likelihood is we're going to be tweaking it after that consent decree. That's just my guess, but, so if I'm hearing you right, you're suggesting we knock down language, let the consent decree turn down and attack.
Right, I'm suggesting that because I think there is a difference between this particular issue, which is of natural proportions, as opposed to our local way of the POC board, the DRB board, and how we're going to handle those things. DOJ may in fact not want to deal with the local issues, but they might in fact deal with gary, which is a tough job.
And, you know, I don't know that you've seen, there was a letter written to the mayor of Seattle when they were under their negotiations on their consent decree from the Department of Justice, where they specifically addressed gary and sort of criticized the police department in Seattle for overly, I'm going to just read the language. Seattle Police Department's inappropriate blanket application of gary may result in the exclusion of reported evidence from these investigations that contain and render unusable other critical evidence. So I think, at least based on this, DOJ has a very strong, strong view of limitations and protections of gary, and obviously, the reason for gary prevents all criminal action essentially. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Last speaker will be Alan Wagner.
Welcome. Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Alan Wagner, I'm a member of the police oversight task force. I have all the concerns about policy, legality of the oversight bodies to implement policy under the new ordinance. It's essentially structured with the same workload as has been in existence. And to give one example of where that has failed, it's been almost two years since Nick Yelich was killed by Albuquerque, the shooting into the side and over to the passenger compartment of his automobile. DOJ criticized in April, when they reported on DOJ criticized the APD policy that allowed shooting into the passenger compartment of the motor vehicle. The IRO, speaking to you, expressed her sense that her job was to see whether the officer complied with APD policy or not. She did not express the need to look at whether APD policy was appropriate or not, and DOJ was very strong in saying that it wasn't. It's been almost two years since then, and at no time has anybody ever changed that APD policy, not while the POC was operating. And even the two months after, when POC was operating, before everybody resigned, after the DOJ report, there was no change in the policy. And six, in the four months since then, you've been no change in the policy. There's a problem when you have a body that is set up and you expect it to do policy, you don't change the workload, and it hasn't done policy, and you expect it to go forward. The selection, the task force was very clear that we were concerned about the community's concerns about input into the selection of task force members, and I don't believe that's addressed adequately. And as far as gary, it's much narrower than is being portrayed. Councilor Benton was on the right track. Gary protects a very narrow plastic statement. It is only a statement that an officer believes or a public employee believes will be incriminating. It is not an entire compelled statement. It is only when there is a reasonable belief that it will incriminate. So it would only apply in a situation where there's likely to be, reasonably likely to be a criminal investigation. And all the talk about how much information is going to come out, if gary materials are revealed, it affects a very small part, a very small part. Most of the complaints that are coming up are not involving criminal activity by officers, and there's not going to be any gary material in anything else.
Thank you. We will now have Mr. Counsel Harris.
This may be for your husband, maybe for his chief, and maybe you can get back to me on this, but I thought that the policy about shooting in vehicles has been changed, we just have a policy that's already changed. Was there, chief, do you have any comment on that? I just don't believe that, I'm not here, because I thought the police department had looked at that.
Mr. President and Counsel Harris, the policy was changed months ago about shooting at a moving vehicle, which includes shooting into a moving vehicle.
Thank you. I think that there is a question for Ms. Hammer, by Council Vice President Jones.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Hammer, would you like to come in here? Ms. Hammer, interestingly, we have heard that the APOA doesn't like this, former, the task force, a couple of task force members don't like it, former POC member doesn't like it. Mr. Fabrizio says it's better, but it's flawed. Do you have an opinion about this?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, Counselor Jones. Samuel Walker is a recognized one of the leading experts in civilian oversight, and he wrote in a civil rights law journal that the principal flaw with most civilian oversight warrants is that they reflect an adversarial model that focuses on the punishment and past misconduct of officers. Walker and other experts agree that achieving lasting police reform, which I think we would all agree what we're seeking, requires a focus on changing the policies and the procedures of police organization. Just as Peter Simonson of the ACOU, Nancy Cullingsburg of the task force, Alan Wagner of the task force, and Mr. Fabrizio Fratellari of the task force said, this legislation as proposed, and even with the amendments which somewhat narrow it, gives a focus in the authority.